Good evening. Oh, I'm echoey today. Nope. Testing, one, two, three, testing.
If you get a reverb, maybe you can get a fuzz.
It's not like this is live or anything. That's okay. Just one moment. We have technical difficulties. Oh, wait. There we go. I think it's better. All right. Now, good evening. Like to call to order the City West Bend Licensing Board for August 15th. Note that we do have a quorum and we have five items on this agenda. The first being approval of the minutes, Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes from August 1st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All is favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then on to agenda items for consideration. Number two, Appointment of new agent Christine A. Marion to Local Hockey Partners LLC, Milwaukee Power Hockey.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three, Appointment of new agent Logan Sterling of Pick 'n Save, Number 417 Ultra Mart Foods LLC. And if we get a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions on this? Hearing none. All is in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four, Original Reserve Class B Combination License for CRG and Suns. Is that V? LLC, Oakenhaw at 271 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions? All is in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number five, Extension of Premise Amendment, Stingers Gold and Recreation LLC at 601 East Paradise Drive, Extension to Mini Golf Course that's already fenced in.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any questions on this? And hearing none. All is in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the Licensing Board, adjourned by the call of the Chair.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City West Bend Finance Committee meeting. We've got two items on our agenda this evening. First being the approval of the minutes for the Finance Committee Regular Meeting, August 1st, 2022, 6:25 PM.
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item on our agenda, Agenda Items for Consideration, is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for the Idol Sites Redevelopment Program Grant. Jess, take it away.
Great. The details are here in the resolution, but I'm pleased to share that we received the $500,000. This was a grant that was executed over the last year for the redevelopment of TID 12, and it included lots of projects over there as well as Forest Avenue reconstruction, so.
Awesome. Thanks, Jess. Looking for a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With no other business before the committee, adjourned by the call of the Chair.
And good evening once again. Like to call to order the City West Bend Common Council Meeting to order for August 15th. Note that we do have a quorum with Alderman Kaler absent but excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll note that we have 11 items on our agenda. The first being approval of the minutes, the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes from August 1st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Alan. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All is in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up is Presentations, the Safe Streets and Roads for All Proclamation. Staff did want to note that there was some mix-up, so this didn't get posted until today. So if we just have confirmation, if you guys are okay, we'll take up this item. Otherwise, it's okay to also push it to the next meeting. Do you mind? Okay. Then I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Alan. All is in favor of the proclamation, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this is very long, so I will read this to you. This reads, "Whereas August is National Traffic Awareness Month, which draws attention to pedestrians and drivers or passengers that become victims of avoidable vehicle accidents each day. Whereas, according to the World Health Organization, every year more than 1 million people become victims of fatal traffic accidents, and about 20 to 50 million people are injured in traffic-related incidents. And whereas, two of the City of West Bend's four strategic priorities include ensuring public safety and maintaining and improving infrastructure. And whereas, the City of West Bend has a history of prioritizing safe streets with the completion of a safety action plan, the Intersection Safety Screening Study, 2015 through 2019, which includes a five-year crash summary. And whereas, the City of West Bend has a Traffic Safety Commission comprised of seven members, including the Chief of Police, one Alderman, and five citizens that monitors, advises, and reports to the Mayor, Common Council, and any other city officials concerning the best methods of providing for traffic safety and orderly flow of traffic throughout the city. And whereas, the City of West Bend developed the 2050 Transportation Network Sustainability Plan, a strategic 30-year plan designed to enhance safe traffic flow, ease congestion, and ensure efficient mobility while improving, enhancing, and continuously investing in a safe, reliable, accessible, and well-maintained transportation infrastructure. Whereas, in December 2021, the City of West Bend secured $4 million in grant funding through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program to support safety improvements at three high-traffic intersections. Whereas, in July 2022, WIS DOT awarded the City of West Bend a Transportation Alternatives Program Grant worth of $220,000 to fund a safety study for pedestrians, bicycles, and electric scooters. Whereas, the City of West Bend Common Council adopted the 2022 operating budget that includes the police department's goal of achieving zero roadway fatalities and serious personal injuries. Now, therefore, I, Christopher Jenkins, Mayor of the great City of West Bend, proclaim a continued commitment to safe streets and roads for all, and I call upon the citizens of West Bend to share in this commitment." Thank you. And next up, we have consenting the agenda, consenting items two through six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Alan. Any questions on these? Hearing none. All is in favor, saying by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we have one agenda item for consideration, Discussion of Possible Binding November 2022 Referendum on Increased Road Spending. So this discussion spawns from the completion of the County Transportation Plan that was just noted on in that resolution. We saw from that plan that we have clear major gaps in our funding on infrastructure, and so this is just one of the options that we could take a look at. I think some bullet points to talk about tonight is that timing is key. We have a November election, which is going to be a huge turnout election coming up, and so this will be a rare opportunity to get a huge collection of that input from our residents. We do need to be aware that a county referendum is already on the ballot, and so we should think about, you know, how that might cloud or change the judgment of the voters when they're in the voting booth as well. We are sitting on $3 million in ARPA funds that, at least in my opinion, a majority of which should be used towards road infrastructure costs, so we already have a nice jumping off point there. We still, unless anything's changed from the chief, we just still are unknowing about the fire grant for the firefighters, which will be a big financial cost as well if we do not get that. And then, of course, staff will continue to be aggressive on grants and other opportunities moving forward regardless. But at the end, you know, we know we have a deficit, so this is just one of the options that we could discuss in order to tackle it. So I'm kicking it over to you guys for some input thoughts. I did share with you in the document, this, I just took the question from the referendum we did maybe two years ago now and have that there as an example. And then I asked Jay to run some estimated scenarios. So if we wanted to net $1 million, it shows here that the rate would go up about 45 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, and then $2 million is 75 cents, $3 million is 110. And again, these are all estimated numbers, but just some numbers for us to think about in our discussion. So I'll kick it from there. Alderman Dolak.
Not sure why we would need a referendum on this issue. Not aware that we're bumping into the statutory requirement that we would have to do a referendum. If you have any information to the contrary, Mayor, you know, I could hear it. But otherwise, absent that, this is a decision that the council, I mean, that's what we're here for. It's also, we haven't even begun to plan next year's budget, so I don't even know. This, I guess where I'm coming, from that standpoint, it seems like this is premature. So there's two questions I have. Is this really necessary from the statutory standpoint? Number two, isn't it a little premature?
Yep. Well, it's definitely not necessary. We've talked about it in the past, that we still have room in our levy. But I do think that this is such a significant policy discussion in my mind that getting that input or soliciting that feedback from the residents, I think, is important, and this is one of the ways that we can do that. But you're absolutely right. We could do that on our own volition, just like we could for firefighters if we didn't get the grant, so.
And to that point, as a segue, I am concerned about what you were saying, Jed, about this possibly being premature. I don't know if, Chief, do you have some sense that this, us not getting this information by now, if that's good news or bad news?
I don't have been awarded yet.
Okay, nobody's been awarded yet. Okay, okay.
To the premature point, though, I did check with our attorney just preparing for this meeting. He needed to say there are deadlines, so if we were having a referendum question, he wanted to make sure that the discussion happened in advance, so that we met, I think it was a four-week deadline, which maybe Jay can correct me if I'm wrong, four weeks prior to the election, that we need to make sure we have that solidified. So I'm not looking for a decision today. I think I agree that it's premature, but if we're going in that direction, then we should start talking about it.
Sure, 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 sure.
Alderman Butchak, am I seeing you?
Yep. The only reason I, I guess I'm in favor of this is because I guess I want to hear from my constituents exactly what they feel. And I think if we tonight discuss this, let them know what we're looking at. And if they have a concern, call your Alderman. Let us know. And I, like Jed says, if there is no statute that we need to do this and we make a decision, I would like the public to at least give us their viewpoints on this regarding, are they interested in us borrowing an extra $2 million for a tax increase of 75 cents per thousand? Would they be willing to do that? And if they're going to say absolutely not, there is no way in heck the roads aren't that bad that we need to raise my taxes, so be it. Then I guess that would kind of steer me in the direction which way we want to go. I know everybody says that I don't want to see any tax increase. We've been doing this for quite a few years. And the only problem I have with that, and that's when I first became council member, I always said, if we are going to continue keeping that level, that levy at a zero increase, it is going to come back to bite us in the end. We are going to be exactly where we are right now. We are in concern with road maintenance. We haven't had a chance to get them taken care of. We're trying to catch up, and it's just going to take forever. But I really would like to hear the public out there, what they've got to say about this. And if they are in favor of it, I'm happy for the increase, but we need to get something done with the roads. We need an answer.
Thank you. Commander.
Was there a reason you felt this needed to be a binding road referendum discussion? In other words, why would we choose to do a binding referendum? If we want to get the pulse of our constituents before we make a decision, it would seem that a non-binding referendum would do the same thing. And again, I'm like, I'm in the same position Jed is. We certainly already, most of us have heard from our constituents on where they think we should be spending. And I would object to this being a binding discussion or a binding referendum.
I mean, I don't have a preference technically either way, but the binding piece, obviously, it puts, it puts real dollars and cents, you know, into the equation. We could say that we're going to spend X amount of dollars, but then when it comes to our time to make a decision, right, we can change it. Whereas now, the voter would have to really put that into their calculator and say, okay, is it worth $150 more for me to get, you know, $2 million more roads a year? I just think there's more weight to having it be a binding referendum, but at the same time, that's, if the council wishes it to be more advisory, that's maybe not, I don't know if you'd be getting as real of an answer otherwise.
Also, this doesn't seem to indicate whether this is one time or if this is something that's going to be an ongoing thing. And I think we're really looking more like we need to be doing this on an ongoing basis, not a, well, we'll put $2 million into it this year instead of one. Or, you know, this is, we need to start looking at, you know, what are the true costs of keeping this road infrastructure in place?
Yep. No, I agree. I think it needs to specify ongoing. Yep. Anything else to my right here? Yes, sir.
Just a point on that. I did, I kind of scribbled, I scribbled out Alderman and Alan, a rewrite of that to include that it would be on an ongoing basis. And I think the reason that Mayor Jenkins is looking at it being binding, and I don't disagree, I think it could be advisory. It's just the last time we did it, it was, we did this kind of referendum, it was advisory, correct? And it didn't amount to anything. You know, nothing really happened. I was in that, I was in the committee that considered that. I had just gotten there, so I didn't exactly know how to attack the issue, but it just fell flat. So if we're going to do, if we're going to do a referendum, I hope it's got some teeth and we actually do something with it.
Anything else to my left?
Timeframe-wise, going back to not being one time, it being continuous over, I mean, what kind of timeframe are we looking at exactly? Does anybody have any idea?
I'm not sure what you're asking. Like, would it be on an annual basis?
Well, so it wouldn't be a one-year, one-time thing.
Correct.
Like Alan said, it would be over how many, would it just be forever? Just, it would be?
Yeah.
So if we're going to, you know, $2 million a year, it's going to be, we're essentially doubling our road budget from now until the end of time.
Until we change something again.
Until something changes again, either goes up or down. Okay?
And no current council can bind a future council, but yeah. Yep.
John, knowing that this is a binding referendum, does that change your opinion at all? Because it goes from hearing what your constituents think to this is the way it's going to be.
No. No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any, I have no problem with a non-binding at all.
Oh, okay.
Yep. I don't have a problem with that. I just, I just want to hear exactly how, I have a copy of the 2018 referendum results. And looking at that, it kind of puts a question mark in the back of my mind, what the results were from the one. And obviously, the questions that we had in the previous ones were not like black and white like this. This is giving, this is basically right to the point. It's like, do you want this, this, or this? Before, there were other scenarios that weren't really indicating were they willing to pay more taxes for just roads, and how much would they be willing? There were other questions, and they, more or less, it was a vague questionnaire that went out. It kind of gave us a direction which way the people were going. So, no, I wouldn't have any problem with that, Jed.
I frankly can't remember, 2018, was that a survey or was that a referendum? I don't remember.
It was a spring advisory referendum.
It was, okay. Thanks.
Yeah. And I think I have like four different options, right, John?
Yes.
One, two, three, four. Yes.
And one thing I got from talking to people about that was, it was very confusing. Nobody knew what to answer.
Yeah.
Felt like intentionally convoluted, yeah.
Yeah. It was, it wasn't like a clear progression. It's like, oh, what do you think about this? Or maybe something else.
Yeah. So my attention would be, we'd be very concise. We would pick a mill rate that we want to go up by. It's going to equate to this amount of money. Do you want it or not? Yeah. Any other thoughts? Maybe it's a complete disaster. We don't even have to bring it up again. But if there's some people that think it's semi-good idea, we can. Just one of the many tools in our arsenal.
As a non-binding, I don't have any real issue with it. You know, it's, it's just, you know, hey, this is how we feel. It'd be great, but it needs to be very clear what we're asking and what the impacts of that are. And we need to make sure that this is like, we are, this is what we believe on an ongoing basis. It will really cost to maintain our roads. And it would be worth, you know, at each of these three, if we're only going to use these three, to indicate, you know, what are, how long it will take us to maintain our entire system. In other words, we can, we can do that with the tool that we have now. So it would be worth, I think, if it includes that information, the voters will have some idea of what we're really asking.
Yep. We also want to make sure that we're not going to be too convoluted, right? We don't want three paragraphs there for people to not read and then make a voting decision.
Don't want it to get too long, right? Very simple.
Okay.
There must be a way we can include some of that information, though.
So, timing-wise, maybe it's the question for Jay. So if we do an advisory referendum and we get results at the beginning of November, and let's say there's just a huge swell of support for action in some way, shape, or form, do we still then have enough time to amend our current budget? Because we'll be approving it like a week after.
Yeah, you'd be approving it at the same time. I don't know that you would need to, especially if it was advisory, rush into anything for 2023's budget. We already have the ARPA money and some increased grant opportunities that you mentioned, so we will be spending more money on roads in '23 than we likely have in the past.
That would be for one year only, though, Jay?
Yeah, it's a one-time.
It would give us time to implement this.
So it'd buy us a year. Yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't spend, we wouldn't propose to spend the entire 3.3 in 2023. We'll have a three-ish year plan to spend those funds. We, just by the time we design and purchase right away, we can't typically move that fast as an engineering department and organization to spend that kind of money upfront. Max would like to try sometimes, but it's tough. And honestly, it's tough on staff, too. The more roads we're talking about doing, we've already maxed out our engineering team, so to speak, with our contracted consultant and our internal staff, so. It's great to do more roads, but just know that that has an impact on our organization as well.
Yep. So I guess then, does the council feel there's value in getting the input from the public through an advisory referendum? Or not?
I have a question. Jay, you brought something up about building more roads, you know, as more demanding on staff. If, if we would decide to, you know, spend X amount, is that going to be on roads? Or is that going to be on, you know, you know, office stuff and, you know, that sort of thing?
Well, ultimately, that's up to the council. The council sets the capital improvement budget on an annual basis and a five-year plan out. If you direct us to spend more money on roads, we'll propose to spend more money on roads. I understand the question.
Any other thoughts on getting feedback?
And before we take, before we finalize this, I'd like to, you know, to actually see what we want to put out.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd add some of your suggestions. I still would stick to maybe just one amount. We don't need to have three options. I think that makes it messy. I would say this council can pick a recommended amount to put into a question like this. Make sure that it specifies that it's ongoing. We can note, you know, our 2050 plan and why we're doing this study or why we're looking for this feedback. And that's all fine and dandy, but anything else that we'd want to make sure is added into a question like this? And then we can ask staff to formulate that and bring it back to us later on. Any other input?
Aaron was doing some quick math over here. Perhaps we could use an example, like a $200,000 home and how much that's going to be?
I just did a little bit of calculation before the meeting started and just, I just crunched the numbers. $200,000 home, which is, I would say, assessed value. Justice made a good point. Assessed values are going to be increasing. I figured $200,000 would probably be median. If we would go with the $1 million mill rate, be an $84 per year increase. $2 million would be about 150. $3 million would be about 220 for a $200,000 home. So, you know, double it for a $400,000 home. So, just gives you a little bit of idea of what people would actually see on their tax bills.
So would you specify that on the ballot itself? The average home is X amount?
I'm suggesting it's possible.
Yeah.
It depends on how long your paragraph is getting.
Yeah.
But I suppose we could just see a couple of different examples of what might go on the ballot.
I mean, it might be prudent enough to say 45 cents per thousand. I think most people would probably be able to figure out, well, if my home is assessed at 200 grand, I just take that times 200. But I mean, you could put an example on there, too. You know, for a $200,000 home, that would equate to $84 a year. Or something like that.
Is, was, how, quick question on the math. Is there a reason 1 million is 45 cents and 2 million is 75?
I'll let the numbers guy answer that.
I was expecting somebody to ask that question.
I didn't pick up on that at all.
It's because we're losing expenditure restraint in 2023. And so the first million in all scenarios takes into account the loss of the expenditure restraint. So we have a hole to make up in our levy from 2023, moving on, moving in 2023 and on. And you, except for newer members, have been told this for a long time, that this is coming, that we're losing our expenditure restraint money. Well, it's finally here. So that's the why the math is different. The math is, is the same between the one and the two, and the two and the three, so that should equal itself out.
Okay. And anything else? Sounds good. We'll go back to the drawing board and bring it back. We can discuss more. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to Reports, which is number eight, a report by Alderman Allen regarding the Downtown Bid Board Meeting.
Well, we met, I got to look at the date. Two weeks ago. Time flies when you're having fun, yeah. August 2nd, we met here in council chambers. Mike Ench, the Parks Director, gave us a great presentation on the Riverwalk improvements that dovetailed with a presentation by Max and Kunkel Engineering Group Manager Mitch Lysis. They both, both groups provided really exceptional fly-through type videos, and I would recommend people go on the city website to see them. We also reviewed our budget, and we discussed the Christmas decorations. And we're going to be staying with David J. Frank again this year. We have an upcoming meeting for public comment on the, on the Main Street reconstruction and the impacts that the Riverwalk's going to have. That's first meeting, our meeting in September. And the Bid Transportation Group's going to continue to discuss the impacts of both these projects. Any questions? Yes?
Did Mike not want to add another four feet to the tree this year? When I left there, he was, his goal was to add another four feet every year. It hasn't come up?
It didn't get mentioned.
Okay.
There is talk of addition.
I'm getting a nod from our executive director. It'll be on the next agenda.
I thought it might. Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah. I don't recall a specific, we need to add four feet to the tree.
Any other questions for Alderman Allen? Then next up is a report by Alderman Model regarding the Plan Commission Meeting.
Am I doing that? Okay.
Leave it.
Yeah, we met on July 29th. Yeah, that sounds right. I actually chaired that meeting. It went fairly quickly. We just had one item on the agenda, and that was to discuss a Jeep Dodge Auto Dealership. and that was to discuss a Jeep Dodge Auto Dealership on West Washington. And there was a little bit of discussion about color and signage and that sort of thing, but it was just a site plan, so we look forward to seeing more on that soon.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Model? Yes, sir?
This, this is east of the Nissan dealership on that side of the street. Does it take up that entire empty open space area?
Yeah. South side of West Washington, east of the Nissan dealership at 2665 West Washington Street.
This is the second of three phases, so it will not fill the entire opening up.
Okay. That's, that was my question was, so we'll have a little green space for a few months, maybe?
A minute, yeah.
Yes, sir?
And then this is planned to be a replacement for the building across the street, the old Kearns on the corner?
On the Villa Park there, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Exciting topic, Justice. And last but not least, number 10, a report by Alderman Burquist regarding the Library Board meeting.
All right, sit down, get some popcorn. We're going to be here a while. No, just kidding, just kidding.
Next time, I'll bring popcorn.
There you go. On August 10th, the West Bend Community Memorial Library Board conducted a strategic thinking session developed by Paul Robach from the UW Madison Division of Extension, Washington County. You remember Paul? We've talked about him quite a bit lately. After a welcome introductions and process overview, the session dug into the library's vision statement. Taking comments from a survey completed prior to the session, Paul identified some themes that stood out. From these themes, we developed a draft vision statement that met the requirements of, number one, depicting a desired future state is motivating, short and simple, can be measured, and lives in our hearts and minds. Discussing these items helped us to understand the general direction of the library's future. The same was done for the mission statement, which helped clarify the library's role as an organization. Next, we looked into the library's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges. Each member was asked to give an example of two or two of each topic, which was then incorporated into the next steps for this review. We also worked together to identify a goal for the library and what that looks like. This was all done with the intention of moving us forward with the next steps and an evaluation. Library staff will now conduct a similar review and refine what we came up with to create a new mission-vision statement, like we have on the wall here in the room. So, that was it.
Great. Any questions for Alderman Burquist? And we are at the end of the meeting, so open up. If there's any announcements for the good of the order? Wow, none? All right. Well, then, having no further business for the County Council, adjourned by the call of the Chair. Have a great night.